Are they getting any money yet on the, uh, on the museum?
From the township?
From, no, no, from.
So where the two guys at?
Nothing major. We've got about fifteen thousand dollars we fundraised. They've got nothing big yet.
No, nobody stepping up my side of the room?
No. I asked.
I met so many new people since, I haven't been involved in this crap forever and I'm like, I know that face. Just been kept lately?
Just today. At Home Depot. He was requiring by him on crutches and setting him on those old right-of-cars. Because my body's not qualified.
Moving his mother-in-law in, within two doors, across the street from his ex-wife.
Oh my God. She has clothing for a hundred people. She's elderly. She could be eighty-ish.
Good evening. We're gonna call the meeting to order. It is six oh one. Good evening. It is, uh, six oh one. We're calling the meeting to order. Great to see everyone. It's been a while since we've gathered together again. Uh, we've got a packed agenda, so we're gonna jump right in. This is the Bath Township Board of Trustees Meeting for Monday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and we'll start with the roll call.
Rosecrantz?
Here.
Fuenz Bliss?
Here.
Hagerman?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Phillips?
Here.
Kellerman?
Here.
In absent as Butler Challenger.
Did I hear Wilson Phillips is here? It's okay. Just, just hold on. Uh, we'll open up with civic reflection here, and in Bath Township, we do the Pledge of Allegiance, and then a moment of silence, so stand if you're able to, and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now a moment of silence. Thank you. If you're trying to follow along on the agenda, there's some extra copies up at the lectern. Uh, feel free to grab that. We are on item number three, which is the approval of the agenda. I have not heard from anyone that we need any changes tonight. Does anyone have any requested changes? All right. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the, uh, agenda as presented?
To make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion about the agenda tonight? All right. We'll take a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, disclosures of conflict of interest is number four. Does anyone have any conflicts they'd like to bring up for the board on tonight's agenda? Doesn't look like it, so we'll keep moving. That brings us to public statement one. Uh, this is the first of two public statements available for folks in the audience to participate in the meeting. Uh, this public statement opportunity, you'll have three minutes, and it's designated only for issues that are already presented on the agenda that we just approved. There will be a second time at the end of the meeting where you will have an additional three minutes to talk about anything under the sun you'd like to share with the board. So I'll open up public statements for anything agenda concerning.
Yes, I'd like to speak to, uh, number thirteen unfinished business. The second reading adoption is zoning ordinance, uh, far as land clearing and cutting. Uh, number one, I think it's an overreach of government to turn around and govern somebody's land where they can cut a tree down in that. Uh, and it's an ordinance I don't feel is needed in Bath Township. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has anything to bring before the board tonight? All right. Again, there'll be another chance at the end of the meeting if anybody has anything to say. Item six is items from county, state, federal, and/or other agencies, and I see our esteemed commissioner in the audience. Are you prepared to share? You look a little dear in the headlights. Oh, that was surprised you.
Uh, Dwight Washington, Park Lake sixteen, four thirty, Park Lake Road, and I'm here to report a few, um, updates from this county and also some of their partners. Uh, first thing I wanted to start out with was the state is looking very closely at a subject code, the subject code for Plin County. And the state has been something that has occupied a lot of my attention with the, um, Mid-Michigan Association of Local Public Health and the Mid-Michigan Health District. So that's kind of something that's on Sam Singh's desk right now, and they're negotiating, uh, version seven. Some people are hopeful, some people are thinking that it's just a big old that could do, and they're looking for smaller, um, steps to go forward. So hopefully there will be some with an exception code that affect our waters. The second thing I wanted to say today is that if you haven't already become aware of or been to visit Clinton Trails Park, uh, it's a new park that the county does have, and it's been a soft open. There's no amenities there, but it's a nice lane. And there's trails for those people who want to like, with the parks that can see, get down to nature. There is a place that's undeveloped at this point in time, and the county does expect to do a little bit of development on that. Um, county's still looking for other southern parks, so it's not a question. It's been something that's brought to my attention a number of times, is looking at Park Lake. Um, somewhere around Park Lake to have a, um, county investment funds. Excuse me, that's still a simple, that's, excuse me, that's still something that's on the table, but it hasn't, um, got the consensus from the Parks Board or the, uh, or the county commissioners yet, but it's something that we've talked about. I also wanted to let you know that from community mental health, that work has been consistently trying to make the subjective well-being and quality of life better for residents in the tri-county area. It's operating on a number of different levels, and they consistently are fighting to keep services public and keep them out of the private hands and private services in particular, so that everybody does have access. And there's a sense of accomplishment because that was defeated. The governor's office didn't decide that you should be looking at that, and that's not there yet, so the community mental health does seem to be a, uh, a good stepping stone. Uh, the two other things that I wanted to mention is, um, you may or may not know that there are some pipelines going through the county and really through the state, particularly going through Sleeping Hollow. And, uh, there is a group there that's trying to do natural, uh, restoration there. They're looking to plant habitat species for, um, monarch butterflies, and they're looking for volunteers to help out with that. Um, and that comes along in the fall, but they're spreading the word right now, encouraging people to, um, recognize the value of monarch butterflies and what they do for our area. And then the last thing that I wanted to point out with is this past week, I went to Project Connect in, at the Bath High School. And that is initiative, this community initiative that has business, private and public agencies that come together, and they pack backpacks for students. Um, this year, and it's, it's, over the years, this project has grown immensely. Um, this is still one of the first years that they've started going to do it, satellites, but they're seeing growth. And even though we got a bunch of rain, there's still a good turnout, but there's, I think that this is something that we really look forward to, be the event that we counter in the future to help get, um, students the tools that they need. And to go along with that, this is a call to the public and everybody else. Department of Health and Human Services in Clinton County and Eden, they work together, but they have to take people who need transportation, um, to the hospitals or to clinics for they to get those services. They're really struggling right now, so they, they did depend on volunteers. They are having trouble getting volunteers now, so it's just immensely expensive to take out that bill of getting people to places where they need to go, um, when we can't rely on the volunteer effort. So if you give the public, anybody who has the time and would like to be helpful or would care to take somebody to a appointment, that would be a very helpful service, and that's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any questions?
I have one. Um, some township residents contacted me a month or two ago regarding, uh, dog-related ordinance at the county level. Basically, I think decreasing requirements for kennels and increasing the amount of dogs that homeowners, private owners could include. I just wondered if you could give any sort of update on that or what happened? I didn't see.
Let's see, that, that's kind of a tenuous state right now. There's a lot of discussions, negotiations taking place right now, and so it's hard to convince you that. Although we did change the ordinance and there's, uh, looking at revising it, and so the numbers, um, are such that it's really hard to imagine that, uh, it'll be able to stay within a reasonable sound ordinance, and we have to come to terms with how we're gonna resolve that at this point in time, but it's something that is being looked at by, uh, with the county administration.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Commissioner? Sounds good. Thanks for being here. I don't see anybody else from state, federal, other agencies. We weren't expecting anyone, Karen. Okay. We'll keep trucking then. Onto item number seven, which is the consent agenda. We have some minutes from, uh, various meetings in there. How are you all feeling about the consent agenda tonight?
I'll make a motion to accept them as submitted.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. It's a consent agenda, so we don't have opportunity for discussion, so we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Consent agenda is approved. That brings us to approval of minutes. We have Board of Trustees meeting minutes from July fifteenth. How would you all like to move forward with minutes tonight?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes as submitted for July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about the minutes? All right, hearing none, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes as, uh, presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes stand approved. That brings us to the vouchers. Is anyone interested in moving the vouchers forward tonight?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the vouchers as presented. Is there any discussion about the vouchers tonight? All right, hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Wilson?
Yes.
Fuenz Bliss?
Yes.
Rosecrantz?
Yes.
Hagerman?
Yes.
Kellerman?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, no treasurer's report, uh, this month. Uh, we will have the next quarterly investment report, uh, from the treasurer on October seventh. Uh, no committee appointments, no township committee reports. Uh, we'll jump into unfinished business, starting with items for introduction and discussion. First up is the Park Lake Nature Trail. If you recall when last we met, uh, we had some, uh, folks from the community present their findings, their opinions, their thoughts, their recommendations to us. And we asked for our staff to come and do the same. Uh, so Ben is here to answer some of those questions and provide some of the further research that he has done. You wanna take it away, Ben?
Sure. Um, the first one that was asked was to confirm, uh, cost estimate for the woodchips along the trail, uh, approximately a quarter of mile by ten feet. And that worked out to be two thousand fifty-five dollars and fifty cents. Uh, that's for two inches of, um, woodchips for the entire length of the trail, ten feet wide, and then double that for four inches thick. Um, that was a quote from Hammond Farms, and that's delivered to the site at, which would be in Oak Island, at that parking area would be the easiest way to put those out. And the furthest for delivery charge, so that was the worst-case scenario for that. I will, I will say that I don't know that woodchips is actually necessary for that. Um, I, my experience walking on woodchips isn't, it's not very fun. Um, and I, I really don't think that that trail needs it. So it, it's kind of a cost that is kind of a waste, you know, in my opinion. Uh, maybe at the entrance, a little area, but to have the whole trail covered in woodchips, I don't, I don't think it's necessary. Um, so that's, that's just my opinion on that. Um, but the, the cost estimate is there. That is a project that DPW could, could install them if, if that was what you chose to do. There was some, just, any discussion on that, I guess? There was some, uh, discussion at the last meeting, um, in a little bit of confusion as far as the id property on the south end and how that's accessed. And, um, there is an easement in place that was in, um, established in the conjunction with the lake level project in two thousand fourteen. Um, and then just some of the, the other easement, I think Spicer's here to talk about those, uh, and clear anything up as far as access goes for that property. On the, the id easements and then other right-of-ways that are present, so they can share their drawing, uh, that they prepared for tonight. You wanna bring that up, Miles? And Dean or John?
Yeah, so my name is Dean Welling. I'm a senior project surveyor from Spicer Group. I work in St. John's, Michigan, obviously. Been doing this for a long time, so, um, just bear with me. I'm not, uh, a grade speaker, but, uh, we've been through this, Ben and I and Beth have looked through these documents and these drawings extensively. Most of our work was actually done during the lake level project, so we went through the exercise of establishing all these section lines, section framework in all the properties. And these are, these easements that affected these properties at that time. Uh, so I think the main one, uh, that allows, is an ingress, basically ingress, egress, or a road right-of-way, uh, is this court order document right here. This, you know, referencing, referencing Library two ninety-three, one seventy-two. Uh, the center line of that right-of-way comes down by Mr. Terramy's driveway. And this, maybe, can you pull up the other drawing? This one with the image in the background doesn't show that center line very well. There you go. That center line of that, of that easement comes right down through here.
Make him.
Yeah, he makes, and stops at this property line. So these two red dash lines are the outside of that, that road easement. It's court ordered. I don't remember exactly what year it was, but this, this easement actually overrode this previous easement that was in place. So that's, this is the center line coming right down through here and ends on this property line right here, which is the township's property. Uh, this is Mr. Terramy's driveway, this gray shaded area right here. And this gray shaded area right here is actually the drain ditch on either side of it, and this is that crossing where his driveway ends. So as you can see, this, this easement, or this road right-of-way, I'll call it, goes across his driveway, comes down here and ends on this property line. That's the most important easement to be discussed. We have other easements that are drawn in here, like this, this berm easement here. This is from the lake level project, the purple one. And then we have the old island that was, uh, Ben mentioned earlier. This plat we have drawn in here is not actually a recorded plat, uh, for the state of Michigan, but it's drawn in here two times because up to the north of here, some previous survey work, the subdivisions, and these larger parcels that were broke out. The idea of where a specific starting point differs, uh, from one surveyor to the next, hence this difference right here is about a hundred thirty-five feet difference of where they, they thought the beginning point should be. That's why we're showing those two on here. It really isn't that relevant, but we wanted to show that on here. But this is that Oak Island plat or park or, I, I, this is Oak Island plat, Ben. But that's, that's what we had it shown on here twice like that. I think there was a misunderstanding of where that's supposed to be. So we're showing the difference of the starting point, what it looks like. Uh, I, I believe that it should be this one up here, but, um, that's, uh, that's just my opinion, so. We do have some other water managements out there that we could show you. I don't think those are that relevant, Ben.
Yeah.
I, I took those off here. The one does come down through here like so where these flags are. Um, but again, the most important right-of-way is this road right-of-way right here, where this center line extends across Mr. Terramy's property and ends right down here on this, on the township's property line. And again, this is where his, his physical driveway ends right here, and that's the county ditch on the other side of it, and that crossing that goes right through here. Is that understandable enough?
Does the easement run on his owned property?
On Mr. Terramy's?
Yes. The easement is on his land that he owns. Is that correct?
It is. Partially, yes, it is.
Okay.
And that's a road right-of-way. It's not a easement.
Yes. It, it, it's a purpose for the road, for a road. You know, for the public to, I mean, what, what roads are used for, drive up and down the road. It's not to do anything other than that. And I suppose the county could probably use that if they wanted to for maintaining ditches and whatnot. It's like any other county road. That's actually, I don't remember how that's actually worded, but at one time it mentioned a certain road, but I know that's, that's just a, it's a road right-of-way is what it is.
So the county can use it. Can I use it? I don't understand the difference. It's public.
And that's where this gets a little bit complex. That road right-of-way, the center line actually cuts across here. You see that? So after you got down to this point right here, you technically not, you technically do not drive on that because you're not in the right-of-way. You're on his property. Uh, and that goes for everybody that lives out in the, in the, in the rural area. We all mostly typically own to the center of the road or to the section line. But the county has easement to do what they have to on typically thirty-three feet of our property. It's just a right for them to maintain it. Everybody has the right to drive on it, okay? But in this case right here, excuse me, his driveway gets outside that right-of-way, so you, you would be technically trespassing as soon as you accident this right-of-way right here. Okay, then it, it means that it goes back across there. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's the problem essentially, isn't it? A big problem.
Well, I, I don't, I mean, I think this was generally was, you know, developed to get back to these property owners only. I, otherwise, this, this road right-of-way would have kept going through here if it was intended to be a public roadway to go through there. I think that's probably why they ended it right here. And granted, these, these documents were executed long before our time, but, uh, now I don't think there was ever any intent to continue this, this road through here.
And, and I think what, what this drawing shows is what the disagreement was earlier this year is that road right-of-way does not contain the crossing of the, of the ditch there.
Yeah, so.
So the property lines are in the corner rate where all three properties come together, where the water control structure is. This road right-of-way does not encompass that. So you would actually cross the road right-of-way and go back onto private property again.
Soon as you went to go across this culvert, well, this, this, the common range is gonna be outside the right-of-way right there.
And that was kind of the, the disagreement or, or misunderstanding from earlier this year, which is the big. Now, there is, I would say, public access there to some extent because the township owns the property to the north. How much of that there is to the north of that water control structure land bridge is up for debate was because it's not marked. So without marking the, staking the property line there and finding out exactly where that is, then we would be able to tell, okay, do we have two feet or do we have ten feet? But the answer is, yes, we have property that's adjacent to that on either side, or, I'm sorry, on the north side of the, the water control structure bridge or the land, the land bridge. But there is not an actual right-of-way or an easement that crosses that. As far as public goes.
That's, that's our finding, that these are the most critical easements, you know, that affect, you know, the questions, so. Any other questions?
Other questions for Spicer?
Does this include the id property?
Um, I don't know if that, I don't think it goes down that far, but I think there was an email, uh, I don't know, it was a month or so ago, that had that document in it. It goes, basically, we're at the very end of this, on the bottom right side of the screen, that would continue south another hundred yards or so, and then turn back to the east, and that's where, actually, you can pull that up on. So if you zoom in right there, Miles, that little section to the south of that red, the red line that goes all the way across the screen, so that section is actually the id property, and that's, that is the easement where that, the south berm is.
So there's public access there?
There's public access there.
That's the maintenance and non-motorized easement?
Correct. That's the one that I referenced in my memo.
Okay, which is different than the road right-of-way easements?
That was a, yeah, so that was basically intended to be able to maintain that section of the berm, and there was a future non-motorized pathway easement included in that.
Other questions? Thank you, Dean. The red line for what? Which one?
So that was the old, on the north side of it?
Yes.
That was the old, there was an old right-of-way, and that was the old center line, which the two were superseded.
That, that relinquished that one. By the time they recorded that, that, that one that was relinquished at that time.
I asked what the solid red line was in the drawing.
That's what that was. That's a historic one. That's a long, dear place.
Okay.
And that, uh, that drawing also shows the new drain easement, the hundred, or the fifty-foot, or, I'm sorry, hundred foot on the fifty-feet. Yeah, fifty feet on the, the north-south part of Webster Road along the, that's to be the top left part of the screen, and then it widens out to a hundred feet going over the water control structure. So that's the new easement that was put in place when the county transferred that property to Bath Township.
So if the county has to access the water control structure, they're basically, should drive through that grass area, not the gravel?
That's, that's where the easement is.
Okay.
And then you have some significant eagle research.
Yeah, um, so I'm, I spoke with, uh, a lady from the Fisheries and Wildlife Department, uh, out of their migratory, their migratory bird permitting office out of Minnesota. And long story short, she said that the U.S. Fisheries and Wildlife does permit construction work and, uh, linear construction to happen within these, uh, these boundaries of the eagle's nest. There's two different permits. One of them is a little bit more specific than the other one. The general permit is, um, basically allows you to do, they, they put a new permit in, which was the eagle's disturb, eagle disturbance permit, which was kind of a little bit more specific to eagle's nests. The general permit will allow you to do linear construction within the three hundred and thirty-foot boundary or, um, buffer, I should say, with the eagle's nest. There's, I think I included them in there. They're a little bit lengthy, but there's reporting that happens. Um, they recommend doing a two-hour per month study while the permit is active, so somebody would have to be down there watching the eagles and documenting what their behavior, um, once a month for the duration of that permit. If your construction project only goes a month, your permit is for twelve months, you still have to report the extra eleven months. The permits go from September first to August thirty-first, so if you were to So if you were to pull a permit now, our permit would only last for eleven days, twelve days. And then we'd have to get another permit for the, the following nesting season. It's not based a calendar year, it's based on the nesting season. So they are there, you can apply for them. There's, you have to present a reason why this is the only possible place to put construction. So you have to, you have to beg your case for, this is, this is the only place we can do this. There's no other option. And then they would issue the permit, we'd do our work and basically be done with it. That's, you only need the permit during the construction of the project. You don't, you wouldn't need the permit through the duration of however long the trail existed. But she did say they have a couple of recommendations. They're not requirements, but there's a critical buffer that's not mentioned within the, the national eagle, the federal eagle guidelines, which is there's a hundred-foot critical buffer. And they don't want you anywhere near that nest within a hundred feet. So they recommended putting a fence up, putting signage up. We kind of talked about that at the May meeting, about signage. And then another interesting thing that she did say was the eagles typically tolerate construction equipment and vehicular traffic better than foot traffic. So the pedestrian foot traffic or human foot traffic would actually disturb the eagles more than a car pulling in. It would be similar to if you're ever driving down the road and you see a deer, the deer don't care that you're driving down the road, but if you stop and you get out of your car, they're gone. So that's the, that's the activity that bothers them. So having a trailhead there is not a, if you bother them, it's, you know, are they going to tolerate it? You're going to bother them to some extent until they get used to it or decide to move on. And that's what this permit protects us against is if we do disturb these eagles to the point where they take off and they go find another nesting area, we wouldn't be liable for the, the federal fines that go along with disturbing eagles. So there are some hoops to jump through. It is possible. We just got to follow the rules to a T. There's really not much leeway on them.
So just to summarize, we could get a permit to do the construction of the parking lot. We could build a fence a hundred feet around so that folks aren't foot trafficking there. And that would abide by all the federal laws we need to abide by. Okay.
As long as all the permits and the reporting and, and everything is submitted properly.
If we decided we want a parking lot on both ends, is that what I'm to understand? I thought we were going to try to go to the east end.
Well, that, that was what the proposal for the, the Park Lake Advisory Board brought forward was to start to, basically, this wouldn't exist anymore, is only to have the parking area at the end of, or at, at Oak Island. Instead of this parking area.
Right, because of all this hassle.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought we were headed at.
Does that affect the homeowners that are across the street, that hundred, hundred-foot zone?
No, because they were, they were, the homes were there. I mean, as far as walking over there, yes, but being that there's a home existing there, the eagles moved in knowing that those people were there. So they're, they're kind of used to those people, but.
They're a hundred and twenty feet away.
Yeah.
Okay.
But those, but if the people decided to put their waders on and go out and shake the tree that the nest is in, that would definitely be a violation.
Sure.
So you just hope that an eagle does not set up shop on your own property?
And you're kind of, you're kind of grandfathered in if an eagle builds a.
If you're first, they can come, what I read is that as long as you're already there, they can do whatever they want. You can't change, like cars go by there, but you couldn't start driving cars by there.
And they're used, well, they're used to, they're used to vehicles driving by.
Right.
They're used to people paddling in their kayaks, they're used to boats being on the lake. And all those are part of, if you look in the, the standard guidelines of these permits, that's one of them, is there's a permit for boating traffic or non-motorized foot traffic. Those, the eagles are kind of already used to that, so.
So if that parking lot had been put in and then the eagles moved in anyway, it would have been no big deal? Okay?
Yeah. Since August fifteenth is the end of our breeding season, so we're already past it, right?
Well.
For Michigan.
It'll start, so, but the permitting starts September first and goes through August thirty-first. So they're, they're, yes, their nesting season for this season is done. And the, the young have probably already fledged the nest, but a new season is coming very soon. So it's a very lengthy process for the eagles. Once they start nesting, that's when they don't want, they don't really want you to do the construction when they're in their peaking nest, peak nest building season. But if we have permits.
Do you have any other information you want to share with us tonight?
I don't think so. The only other thing that I would share is if we do pursue and clear with Oak Island to have the trailhead at that end of it, I would recommend that, right, currently, there's just a fence with an opening in it for people to walk through. I would recommend putting a gate with something that we could get the fire department side by side through just for emergency access and maintenance, especially if we're going to be putting wood chips out there. We need to be able to get some sort of equipment back there. So removing that fence and installing a gate that we could lock.
Ambulance accessible too.
Well, the ambulance wouldn't be going back there, but the fire department equipment could get back the trail when, when they're side by side.
Has that process started at all, the discussion with Oak Island?
No, so that is the other piece to this that we have agreed to move forward with. With Karen being out, we've had some miscommunication between her and I. She's asked me to take that on. We don't have a contact at Oak Island. And so as I have been digging, they're owned by people who are owned by people. So I'm trying to do the corporate trail to see who, who would know anything that I'm talking about? Should I call them up and ask for a meeting? So I think I have found like the home entity. So my goal is to reach out to them and include Ben. And then we agreed to include Dan Hayes from Park Lake Advisory Board as well. So that's the only piece that I think we had agreed to pull together that we have not yet today, right? Barring that conversation, is, do you administration writ large have any recommendations for how we move forward on this?
We've not discussed it further, so we can do that, but no, it's, it's been Ben collecting information.
And I think that conversation with Oak Island is going to drive how we go about it.
Right.
Do you think any problem with Oak Island or should be positive for them?
I have, well, you could, you could look at it both ways.
They have traffic that isn't homeowners.
So when I came in two thousand and twelve, Oak Island wanted nothing. They didn't want people going in there and doing that. I think that may have changed over time and we'll have to see what the, what the feeling is now. But when I first came here, they wanted no part of people, additional people coming from the outside. And it's near, it was at the time near a children's playground. So they didn't really want people coming in from the outside and parking near a children's playground and then proceeding to the trail.
But we can do the other end if they say no. Altogether, we can do this, we can manage the eagle issue.
I'm not, I'm not hearing that from Ben. I mean, I think he's still saying we can, but.
Sounds like we can.
I, I think legally, I think you can, you know, I. Is it a township priority to make that happen though, is what you're going to have to decide?
Is it costly?
I, I think it's the most costly, costly option.
We sure want a clear contract with Oak Island that wouldn't backfire on us if we went that way. Long-term contract agreement.
There would have to be easements.
Yeah.
And legal descriptions.
Right.
Of that easement recorded.
Especially if they sell or.
Right.
Difficulties that way.
Our lawyer.
Jack, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do, I have a, just a question and comment. So Ben, you and I went down there, we looked around, spent quite a considerable time, so I could come to a fuller understanding of it. One of the things we talked about, I think was important is even if you do access it from the Oak side, Oak Island side, that you have some terminating point that's fenced so people don't wander onto Terramie's property. I think that's a huge part of this. Having said that, I think that's a huge part of it anyway because even if we had the money to build a parking lot and we clearly defined the trail to go back there, people are going to end up on Terramie's property. There's no way that's not going to happen. And that's going to be just a constant, constant back and forth between the police, Mr. Terramie, potential lawsuits, you know, whatever. I just, I think this is really.
A people-proof fence.
Well, yeah.
I mean, not just a decorative.
I'm glad you use that term because frankly, I don't think you can people-proof anything.
Well, no, but not like a, a split rail fence that's this high, but a real fence. Especially on his property line that, because I walk back there a lot too. And I said, that is too easy to walk, especially with the weird surveys.
Yeah, it's really easy to do with no one town, let's put it that way.
Yeah.
So I think that's, that's a thing that's a concern. Okay, and that's all I had, sir.
Thanks, Jack. Other questions or thoughts for Ben or administration? All right, so we will track someone down at Oak Island or their home office and get something scheduled. And that'll be the next data point. And I think depending on what happens from that, that should be our last data point to collect. We've had the committee sort of restructure their request to us. We've had staff now weigh in. I think that's the last piece, is this other opportunity even available to us? Does that sound right to folks? Anything else hanging out there that folks want to know? All right, thanks for your hard work on this, Ben.
You're welcome.
Next up, under items for introduction and discussion, is Webster Road project update from our superintendent.
If you could give me just a second. I put in the communication that I had from the Clinton County Road Commission. It is clear to me that the contractor that will be paving Webster Road will not be starting work on Webster Road this fall. They may do some preparatory work on the sidewalks, but most likely the project as a whole will take place in the spring of 2025. We will do our best on staff to try to make sure that doesn't overlap with any work that may, may be done on the Norm project. Because of course, we wouldn't want to put down a new road and then have significant equipment traveling over that. So we will do our best to try to organize that work as it moves forward. But right now, we're waiting for some, the, the bids are in and Clinton County Road Commission has asked for a couple of weeks to flush out the numbers and then contact me with the final numbers of that project.
When you informed me of this, I asked you if we would have some sort of first opportunity in the spring to make sure our project gets done now that it's being pushed back and you'd indicated that we would.
We would, yeah. It will most likely be one of the first projects up in the spring of 2025.
Great. Questions?
Will they be bringing the stop signs back?
So the stop signs, the stop signs were actually MDOT. Those had nothing to do with Clinton County Road Commission. That was actually MDOT because of the work that was taking place on the highway. So they wanted to because people were coming to the highway from another area outside of Bath Township and also both traffic coming in and coming out because of the construction on the highway. Those were for that additional traffic, not, not for local traffic. Of course, you have to abide by a stop sign, but the intent was from MDOT to kind of help and make safer that, the traffic that was coming in and out of the township.
I noticed today when I drove through that there's a bunch of like sandbags and some of the metal bracing still sitting on the side of Webster Road. So that's MDOT's responsibility to care.
Yeah, that had nothing, absolutely nothing to do with Clinton County Road Commission. I noticed the, the stop signs when I was off on leave and reached out and it was actually MDOT. And, and I know that they put them down and then put them back up and it was causing quite a bit of confusion. But there's, there's really not much you can do when MDOT is, is doing those things in the, in the township. So I know it was frustrating for everybody, but.
Right.
The intent was to make everything safer.
I got a question.
Yes.
Are we going to do the sewer lining at the same time as the Webster Road?
That would be our desire, would be to time those two things at the same time because there is manhole repair that needs to be done as well.
All right.
So that would be pushed then to.
To spring. Okay.
Well, that's helpful. All right, anything else on Webster Road, folks? All right, we will turn it over to the Miles show here. We're at item thirteen B, items for action. This is the beginning of many items for action from our planning department as well as many items for introduction and discussion from the planning department. I'm glad Miles is earning his keep.
Yeah.
First up is the second reading and adoption of zoning ordinance amendment number seventy-eight point oh one. That's the land clearcutting ordinance. We've heard from Miles on this topic already, we've heard from the planning commission. Does anyone need to be refreshed on that or have any other questions or comments for Miles?
Yeah, Miles, just to clarify, I think I asked you this before, but I, my recollection is not strong on it. What would trigger, if somebody came in for a land clearing permit, what would trigger a no response?
Well, it would go before the planning commission because, you know, these are going to be a one-by-one case scenario because we cannot foresee what will possibly come. The only thing I could see is if it had a drastic negative impact in, so like some neighboring areas. Like, let's say a parcel is being developed, it's large, right next to a bunch of residents and the developer hasn't accounted for what the runoff externalities would be. You know, that might be something that the planning commission would want cleaned up. But I would think if a developer came in with a plan and was like, yes, we've considered that, here's how we're going to divert water, I wouldn't foresee an issue. The main thing is just to reassure us that there's a plan in place. What we don't want is fifty acres to be cleared cut with no plan and now I got fifty people calling the township, my yard's flooded. That's kind of worst-case scenario. But again, I just want to make clear that this ordinance basically only applies for commercial developments and over half an acre of land clearing.
So vacant land is not necessarily.
If it's vacant land and like the rural district and somebody's just trying to build a home, no, it won't be affected.
Farm wouldn't be.
Farm's not affected, you own some property, every ten years you have a logger come in and get the maple trees that are high dollar. Doesn't matter.
Other questions? If I recall, the planning commission approved to recommend this to us, but it was not a unanimous vote, is that right?
Yeah, one person voted no.
Six, one, is that what?
Six, one.
That's helpful. Well, folks, we've already moved this forward on one introduction and reading and we're ready for the second reading. How do you all want to handle this?
I make a motion, will we approve it?
I would like to make a motion, we approve it.
We have a motion to have the second reading and approve the adoption. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion or questions from the board before we vote?
I will say that I think one of the things we talked about quite a bit at the planning commission was the remediation aspect of the ordinance in that if somebody were to just come in and clearcut a property, then never develop it and never plan for it, then they would be responsible for putting some of those trees back. Which currently, we don't have anything in place. So thinking of like over by the, the outlet mall at Clark Corners, right next to that, which was clear cut and then never developed, nothing has been put back in place. And you can certainly imagine that's affected the wildlife, probably runoff going to the highway and other neighbors. So I think that this offers some recourse if that situation were to play out similarly in Bath Township.
Right.
Okay, great. Right, agree.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, we'll take a roll-call vote.
Fewens Bliss?
Yes.
Rosecrance?
No.
Hagerman?
Yes.
Kellerman?
Yes.
Phillips?
No.
Wilson?
Yes.
That's four to two, if I count right. So, the motion does carry. Next up on the item, excuse me, Items for Action, is the Second Reading and Adoption of the Regulatory Ordinance Amendment Number 6804, Operation Requirements for Commercial Marijuana Facilities. So, again, we have moved this forward at one point. We've heard from Miles. We've heard from the Planning Commission. Do folks need a refresher? Do folks have further questions, or should we move this to action immediately?
This is primarily the hours of operation, if I recall.
Hours of operation and also the allowance of the use of the word cannabis in signage. It's probably worth noting that B here is the regulatory side of this language, or C is the zoning side of this language. So, they kinda live together. That's why they're both coming at the same time. The applicant is in the room too, if there's any questions for them, Ben.
It does not look like there is. Is there any other questions or comments?
So, do you wanna lump them together, or take them separately?
We should take them separately.
Yeah, both separate, I just wanna go.
I make a motion, we accept B.
So, move the Second Reading and Adoption of the Regulatory Ordinance Amendment Number 6804? Is that what you were saying?
Yes.
Great. So, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I will second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion or questions about moving this forward tonight? Seeing none?
Rosecrance? Oh, I'm sorry. Rosecrance?
No.
Hagerman?
No.
Kellerman?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Fewens Bliss?
Yes. Looks like another four to two. So, that motion carries as well. All right, that brings us to C, which is, as Miles just said, the zoning part of that ordinance, Amendment Number 31.88, Site Development Standards for Commercial Marijuana Facilities. Again, we've heard this already. We've moved this forward once already. Does anyone need any other refresher, or any other questions about this topic in particular? No?
I will make a motion, we accept it as written.
All right, we've got a motion for the Second Reading and Adoption of Zoning Ordinance Amendment Number 31.88. Is there a second?
I will second that one also.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other further discussion or questions on the zoning side of this? Madam Deputy Clerk, you are up again.
All right, Hagerman?
No.
Kellerman?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Fewens Bliss?
Yes.
Rosecrance?
No.
All right, another four to two. That motion carries. Sherry, now they can use cannabis, so you won't wander into that store and not know what you're doing.
Buy flowers!
Call it the Kellerman Ordinance.
Oh, great.
Next up is Item B, Little D, Landmark at Hawk Hollow Number Two Special Use Permit for Planned Unit Development from our planner.
All right, I gave my laptop out for this one. This is introduced before, but just so everyone can get the visual, and I'm doing my math, so we'll see what happens here. Oh, yeah, that's about right. But, yeah, so just because I know there's some confusion sometimes with location. This is Chandler. This is Club Course. There's a property here to the south, this parcel, and there's a parcel that's been proposed, and I think at this point, been approved to the north. Five units down here on the southern parcel, four units up here on the northern parcel. Same, generally speaking, lot dimensions and formation as what's in the current landings, and same housing style proposed by Mr. Kessler here. Due to the nature of how PUD is established, this will technically be its own PUD. I think in time, the HOAs will decide if they wanna join forces or stay separate entities. But, that's, you know, that's within their purview.
And all driveways will dump out to Club Course Drive?
Yep, yep. That's a good question, a good point.
All right. Thank you for the brief recollection and what you shared with us last time. Are there further questions or concerns?
It's nine housing units, or how, nine houses?
Nine individual houses.
Nine individual houses. These will be single-family homes.
Okay, gotcha.
It's also a good question, not to be confused with like, how many condos or something like that.
Yeah, five condos, okay.
When this land was proposed to be commercial, we received some heavy feedback from the neighbors that they were not interested in that.
They were not.
Has there been any feedback about how they feel about this?
They're pro this.
Great.
This is, in my opinion, in the terms of land use, this is the best. If you take their point of view and their view on this, it's the best possible for them.
All right, would anyone like to move that forward?
I'll make a motion to approve the Second Reading for the permit for planned unit development at the landings Hawk Hollow Two Special Use Permit.
Second it.
This is just the first review of that?
Oh, I'm sorry, it is the first. Yep.
We won't need two reviews because it's not an ordinance.
There is now a second there, yeah. I'm sorry, thank you.
I knew you knew that, Jack. I was saying that for everyone else who was like, "What is he talking about?" All right, so we've got a motion and a second on approving the special use permit for the landings at Hawk Hollow Number Two. Any other questions or concerns before we move to a vote?
Kellerman?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Fewens Bliss?
Yes.
Rosecrance?
Yes.
Hagerman?
Yes.
All right, that's a six-zero that motion carries. Thank you, folks. That brings us to the last item for action under Unfinished Business, 13BE, Acceptance of the Strategic Site Readiness Program Subgrant Agreement from our superintendent.
Thank you. I would note that this comes to you for action, but I would follow up with that and say that this has not been reviewed by legal counsel. If that's something that you wish to have done, or legal counsel believes that's recommended, I am open to that. The reason it's here tonight before you is because in our work with LEAP, it came to us for approval. It is the practice of this board to accept grants when they come to the township and they are awarded to the township. So, it is here for that action. This obviously is money that we applied for to support the Norm Kessler Project, Norm Fastener Project, I'm sorry, I always mispronounce that, the Norm Fastener Project, to the south here of the township. And it is the entirely, entirety of the sanitary sewer system equalization based in that we would be installing with these funds.
So, it's my understanding that this is a sub-grant from LEAP?
Correct.
Who received the larger grant from MEDC?
Correct.
From the strategic fund?
Yes.
Okay.
In my opinion, it's pretty standard language. I don't know if legal counsel would agree with that, but, or if they feel like it would need a review.
These do tend to follow a particular form and format, so I'm not seeing anything off the top of my head that causes concern. But, it certainly could be appropriate to move to accept pending some sort of critical issue that legal feels. I mean, we don't need to come in and, "I don't like that comma, just because I don't like it." If there's something substantive that is of concern, we could bring it back to you. But, otherwise, it could then therefore be approved.
Should the Norm Project not move forward, how much of these funds, if any, would we still be able to take? Would we have to repay anything? Because I know we're putting some work into things now.
Sure. I would ask our planner to step to the podium and address that. He's had those conversations while I was away on what part of the funds could be utilized without penalty.
Yeah, so that's a great question. That was one of our concerns too. Like, are we gonna be $500,000 into this, whole thing goes awry? As can happen for a million reasons in development, as I know everyone here knows. And then we're on the hook for $500,000 of expenses that we now owe the state of Michigan. There's a little bit of back and forth between us, LEAP, and the MEDC that resulted in the MEDC basically being like, and by no means is this official legal language, but they're like, "We got your back. Do your thing. You're not on the hook for it." And we're like, "Okay, just get that in the contract. We'll be good."
So, for the entirety, or just upfront costs?
The entirety of all the money spent. But, obviously, we're not gonna spend all, you know, $3 million, or however much it takes, all in, you know, the first, there would be tranches of money that would have to be released. And they'll probably release money to us over time. I'm not exactly sure how that's all gonna work.
Yeah, I think that was laid out in here, how that would be.
Yeah, and I think that was indication, as LEAP explained it to me.
Half a million dollar chunks, I think I saw somewhere.
And that makes sense. So, as the project goes, we'll have to pull different draws, money, but we're not on the hook.
But, should Norm Project not move forward, we can't still move ahead with our sewer project and use this funding?
Yep, once they're out, then the money is tied to that project, if they were out.
Okay. Other question? Oh, go ahead, I'm saying it.
What in and out means sometimes can be fluid though, so as you know, in developments, things can be fluid.
Questions, thoughts, concerns from the board? Sherry?
Is there a bond if there's a disaster and we dump PFAS and we contaminate the water? Because I know it's impossible, but say it happens anyway, that what sort of bond is the Norm Fasteners putting up to cover the cost of replacing the water system for Bath Township?
That wasn't one of their conditions of their approval, but that's also, I think, probably outside of what the item we're talking about here is.
Yeah, this is for the sewer system. And it's a closed system, whereas anything that, wastewater that comes from the building goes into this closed system and travels to Duett. So, this is not, this is not a, per se, a groundwater contamination.
Couldn't possibly happen.
This is more, we're, sometimes there's been a little bit of confusion because we have the Norm Fastener Project, which obviously is happening very near and close to the project we're talking about tonight, which is our municipal sewer project in an effort to build capacity for this community.
They're related, they're connected in terms of this grant, but they're not the same project.
They're not the same project, and that's been important on the staff's side, to make those distinctions as we've been doing our due diligence with this process.
Functionally, we're using the Norm opportunity to leverage funding to do what we wanna do with the sewer, long-term, anyway. So, this piece of it is the grant piece only for our controlled sewer piece.
Okay.
This is the piece that we have, I think, the most control over.
Think about this, any other municipal project, very similar to the project the superintendent was talking about with Webster Road. That's a municipal project that's under our charge. This is a municipal project under our charge.
And the sewer basically needs to be done, like, correct?
It is part of our long-term vision. If we want to have additional build-out in the township, we will at some point need this to be done. But, if we didn't have the Norm Project, would we need it today exactly? I would think that folks would say, "Not exactly."
It also does eliminate those two pump stations, which not only, so there's a capacity building effort, which you were just speaking to, but the elimination of the pump stations is a sustainable effort that really should happen for the township if the ability is there. The energy draw on those pumps is large, and therefore, what we pay in energy is large.
So, I would offer to you that what you're asking is, it's been part of our CIP as far as the sewer system is concerned for some time because all wastewater comes up through this area before it heads to Duett. So, even from the southern part of the township comes through here. And this would allow us the opportunity to hold some of that water and let it go at non-peak times, which creates kind of a more of a capacity for us. But, Miles is correct that it eliminates two lift stations, which is always desirable to eliminate lift stations just because there are maintenance and costs related to those. But, yes, as the township continues to develop and build out, we would eventually need this. This was actually proposed, I think, back in 2014 or 2015. We took bids and they were far above the costs that we anticipated, so we didn't complete it at that time under former Superintendent Dan Wutichia and our, I think, former sewer engineering of C2AE. So, what you have here today is the continuance of that project, that, yes, we will eventually desire that equalization to be able to release the wastewater at non-peak times. Thank you.
And we know there's at least one project that is perhaps able to move forward, should we do this project now.
Meaning that that allows for some more development?
Yes, where we don't have the sewer capacity to allow for further development, further down the line as the stuff moves to Duett.
Right.
It's necessary for the nine housing units also, I understand, right? Is there to the right of that, the eastbound?
I don't know that we could not do that without this, but it's not gonna hurt, that's for sure.
Right, I mean, it's kinda...
Right, it is...
Within that...
Headed that direction.
Headed that way, okay.
I make a motion to accept the Strategic Site Readiness Program Subgrant Agreement with the attorneys looking at it to make sure there's any other changes that need to be done.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion, questions, Jack?
Yes, thank you, Ryan. I do have one question, and I have to freely admit, I have not looked at a grant of this magnitude before myself. I'll just read in part off of Section B. It says, "Us as a sub-grantee and all of its contractors, employees, and agents abide to, to, agree to abide by the positive timekeeping standard," okay? Which I think is important. I'm gonna make some assumptions here. They're not talking about people in our front office putting through this information. They're talking about people that work for Prine and Newhoff, or whoever the engineers are, and all their people are taking care of this on our behalf. Is that correct?
I would defer to legal counsel if there's an opinion from them, but yes, I would agree with you that it is our staff and as well as Prine and Newhoff that we all move forward in a good-faith effort to continue the positive production of this project.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, how deep our people here are gonna get involved is a concern of mine. You know, what we have the ability to do with staff. So, I was hoping that the assumptions I made, that it would be the people actually involved in doing the project, it would be their timekeeping project also.
Do you have thoughts on that? Again, without having done the deep dive, I also agree with you. I think even our office would be subject to that, to the extent that we were providing additional legal advice pursuant to this project. I think the scope of the grant includes some $35,000 allocated if needed for legal. So, your assumption is correct. It will require minding by, I would say, our lovely superintendent here to make sure that everyone else is doing that, although most of the time, engineers and lawyers are already keeping time pursuant to projects, so we should be able to do that. I think it's the in-house stuff that will have to be minded very carefully because that is not a custom that folks are typically associated with, right? They flipping from project to project. When working on this particular project related to this grant, it will be critical that everyone note the time, note what they're doing, make sure they're comfortable with the time-tracking mechanisms.
That's the only question I had. Thank you.
Thanks for asking that, Jack. Any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second, so we'll do a roll-call vote.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Fewens Bliss?
Yes.
Rosecrance?
Yes.
Hagerman?
Yes.
Kellerman?
Yes.
It's not often we get to accept multimillion dollars into the township, so happy to do so. That brings us to Item 14, New Business. This is also the Miles Show. We've got several projects for introduction and discussion, and just one item for action. So, I'm gonna turn it back over to you, Miles. We're at 14 Large A Small A Non-Motorized Pathways and Trails Plan first.
All right, I'll try to keep it brief because we got a lot on the agenda. As was noted, if anybody's unfamiliar with what a non-motorized plan is, it's basically a plan that falls kind of under the purview of the Planning Department. It's one of these, considered a minor plan that feeds into the whole comprehensive plan narrative. The comprehensive plan, of course, being the legal foundation and the vision... The comprehensive plan, of course, being the legal foundation and the vision and framework of how planning departments around the state get our legal authority to enact planning and then guide us on our efforts to plan. The non-motorized, obviously, that's an important element, it's been gaining traction and popularity as kind of the planning zeitgeist, or I guess has changed from being more auto-focused in the seventies and eighties, and now being more complete streets-focused is the buzzword that people like to use, where we think about, you know, the hiker, the walker, the biker. And this is just an overall map of showing the township and some areas where trails are presently established and non-motorized efforts are presently established, and some where we would like to see efforts established. I myself did a lot of this mapping in, in an effort, I guess, with Williams and Works and their GIS people. I was surprised at how many trails we had in the Rose Lake area. We geolocated a lot of these, a big shout out from Ben, who showed me a lot of these because he just grew up in this area and happens to know where they are. And so I think there is a great non-motorized network in the township. Our real effort in this plan was to make linkages between points of interest and non-motorized networks. There's a lot of places people are kind of hanging out and milling about, but those places aren't always well-connected. And so this plan sets a framework for us to try to do that. It's obviously a good resource to seek out grants as well. Whenever you're going for these grants these days, they pretty much don't even want to see a submission if there's not a plan to back it up. So, any questions?
It seems to me that the, this is all very critical, but for the board to see pages 27 and 28 where it outlines the goals, would you agree, Miles, that those are the things that the board should understand we are putting forth into the ether? And if we don't like these goals, this would be the time to, to say that.
A hundred percent, it's probably worth saying too, that's where Williams and Works and their expertise really came in handy on what grant writers are looking for, or grant, you know, reviewers are looking for. And they tried to structure language and those key buzzwords that would, you know, tick the boxes for these grants would be going. It's probably worth noting while you review too, that there is a fair amount of public input for this. You know, we had several listening sessions, we also tried to meet people where they were at. So we did some farmer's market tables, we did the summer solstice and tried to get public input that way too. There's a pretty comprehensive survey that went through with this. This body's already seen the results of a lot of that survey when you guys approved the recreation plan. Because we didn't want to over-survey people, so our thought was to do one big survey for both plans to try to, you know, boost that number. If we're doing one survey every month, people are just going to tune out.
So this will also, or these will also be the goals that we are sharing with our committees? And the work that they do, and the CIP proposals that they give us, most likely will align to this. So I think that's the piece that we as a board should understand, we're sort of putting this out to the community that this is what we want to move toward, and hopefully, that that's what we'll get back from our committees and from our residents. Anything else in here, Miles, that you'd want to point out in particular?
No, I mean, it was just a real group effort, and I appreciate the Planning Commission, the Parks and Rec Body Recreation Commission now, and all the staff that came out and the board members that came out to a lot of our listening sessions, you know, outside working hours. So it's a lot of appreciation on my end for the other folks. And our superintendent and the board who allowed the funds to be able to bring in Williams and Works. We would not have been able to get this quality plan in place today if it wasn't for you guys.
That's helpful to know. So you will bring this back to us for adoption next meeting?
That's the hope.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
So I know the state's just agreed to allow on all state trails e-bikes. E-bikes, I have to admit, I'm under-prepared on this particular topic, because I've seen this many times. But is there any mention of that in here, or was something going forward to address that some way? Because I know it's been kind of a. Well, yeah, it's more than a gray, I mean, it's been a long time for the state to even agree to it because there's a lot of push both ways.
The buzz term in the planning industry is right now is rolling, and rolling covers some of those e-bikes, e-board capability, I don't know if you guys are familiar with any of the electronic boards are very popular in the cities. Yeah, it's, it's an issue for planning right now, for sure, because you're trying to craft a trail to one group of users, but then you have kind of this motorized, non-motorized element with these e-bikes and e-boards. And it's definitely something I'm planning for. It's not, I, I don't think it's addressed in the detail in this plan that you're probably wishing it was. A lot of our trails, the one thing I guess we kind of got going for us to mitigate that is, for better or for worse, our right-of-ways aren't that large. Pretty much Webster Road south of this building is the largest right-of-way in the township, or the largest shoulder. Those shoulders are six to eight feet. That when you go down Parker Lake Road, the shoulder is a foot. So most people that are doing, engaging in this type of recreational behavior would not prefer to be on a street like that, so there's a little bit of market filtering. They filter into the areas. Now, over on Chandler Road, on that sidewalk network and all the large student apartments back there, yeah, we're going to see it a lot back there. But that's where those off-street wider sidewalk, they actually call them a pathway, is the legal definition for those. Those pathways are crucial to try to encourage that type of use on those and get it off of the shoulder and also off of the normal five to six-foot sidewalk.
Part of the reason I'm sure you've seen this in the news lately, but yeah, the e-boards, particularly, what do you call, the stand-up ones, whatever.
Yeah, the birds.
Scooters.
Scooters.
As you all know, like, over 200 to 300 have already been dumped in the Red Cedar River in East Lansing. And having those things around has a potential for good and a potential for, we're not really crazy about that happening in that area, so. Part of my reason for asking, thank you.
No, it's great, it's all good, I mean, that is our corridor where we see those a little bit is down there on the Chandler. But as for the rest of the township, it's not too common.
I thought you may be asking because that's how you were on crutches tonight?
That could happen, Ryan.
Are e-bikes allowed at Rose Lake Trails? That's no bikes, no, that's just.
I think bikes are allowed there.
You can bike, so e-bikes are now today legal?
It's a state park, I don't know what their guidance is.
Said state trails on the thing that I read from the Bridge of Michigan report, so.
So they are legal there, 30 miles an hour down the trails.
I don't think you could physically get to 30 miles an hour.
Die quickly.
Yeah. Yeah, they're dirt trails.
But they have fat tire e-bikes.
People do bike back there, I, I like that a lot, and if bikers go by me, I've never had an incident.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I would encourage the board to read this over, stick it under your pillow and hopefully you'll get it all by osmosis, and we'll review this one more time before, well, we'll review it one more time and vote on it then.
Sure.
Thank you, Miles, for that, and to all the folks who are involved in that, you can tell it's a lot of work. Next up, under new business items for introduction and discussion is Food Court Lane Service Station Special Use Permit, again by Miles.
All right, so the developers are here tonight, they're in the back row, and they have their team with them. So if you have any questions, it's probably worth at least, I think the architect brought their materials sampling board. So if you guys want to check that out, it might be nice to review. But I brought up their architectural elevations here. So the area we're talking about, if you haven't heard through the grapevine already, is kind of out in front of the food bank, right where Webster Road and that 69 approach kind of meet that corner there. There are some MDOT properties, so beyond north of that is a lot that was previously owned by Mr. Kessler and I think has been divided out at this point. I can go to fetch GIS and show that, but. In terms of land use, what we're talking about here is a special use permit for a service station with an attached drive-through. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the drive-through is going to be independent. It's not a franchise that you're locating in.
A pickup window, not, not.
Okay, a pickup window, and you guys special on breakfast pizzas?
Yeah, our food, that's the purpose of the pickup window, for our food portion.
Yeah. So according to the signage information we got, it looks like it's going to be a VP. I think there, and there's some future plans for possibly some electric charging stations down the road. That's something where there's, it sounds like there's quite the lengthy licensing process to go through, and a lot of that's out of their hands, has to be determined by the state, which I know on our side, I'm used to. So there wasn't any requirements recommended by the Planning Commission to require that as an aspect of them gaining C of L, because that could be years in the future. It takes quite a long time to get licenses, and some of that's out of their control. There is a suite of conditions I've been recommending for myself and the Planning Commission on this one. Some of those, it's been nice, because I've seen KEB's engineering already start to kick out some of the pages meeting those conditions. We already have kind of a, some of a second agency review in play now. So it's been nice to work with a developer that's actively, you know, kind of curing some of these issues and non-conformities that we've seen. So, you know, always going to call that out when I see it. Let's go to the site plan itself here. All right, so you can see, there's a lot going on on this page, but this is Webster Road here. This is Food Court Lane, which is a public road now, three different access points coming in. The proposed building itself, the apron for the pump stations themselves. Drive-through and stacking would happen here, I guess, a pickup window, let's call it. The stacking would happen here around the back of the building. They've put good thought into how their drive-through and kind of traffic flow on-site will work. Of course, there's always been some pushback from the Planning Commission on exactly how to do that. We have a former traffic engineer, thankfully, that's on the Planning Commission, really helps us do a deep dive into some of that. I guess in my opinion, you know, we've seen a lot of development in Bath Township over the last couple of years, it's pretty well cut out. We did see some externalities that could be created, and we tried to address those in the conditions. And like I said, KEB's engineering has already been trying to speak to some of those. Just because there are some special concerns that come with gas stations, and we want to make sure that from the planning department, Planning Commission side, we're getting the best product for the township, long-term.
We had talked about in the Planning Commission some sort of a little bit of a green space at the south end.
Yeah.
Did that make it into the conditions, or would that be dealt with separately?
Yeah, no.
Did I just miss it?
Are you not seeing in the conditions in the report? They've actually sent an updated plan showing some of that already. So maybe we took it out because we're already in the process of reviewing it.
Okay.
Yeah, they need to, oh, this is a better sheet. They needed an area to the south to help with some of the stormwater and surface water runoff management. So they're cleaning up and doing a little bit of work on their plans to the south. MDOT's going to want to see that anyways, because they're not going to want any unfiltered systems going into their wetter areas along 69. So there have been a lot of eyeballs on this one, obviously.
So this is coming to us with a Planning Commission recommendation? And was that a unanimous vote?
Let's see, because you always ask, and I don't know why the page is turned in here, if I've been including it in my report now, because I can't remember every time you ask.
Sounds unanimous.
I think it was, yeah.
Oh, yep, I see it there. Thank you for including that.
I don't know, this page isn't working with me, but yeah, it sounds like it's unanimous.
Great. So this would return to us also in a couple of weeks?
Yep, and I know, do you have any questions you want to see the, the materials they're planning on using on the voting?
It says it's wetlands on the south side.
Yeah, there's some wetter areas on the south side that have to be protected. And obviously, they're going to have to get all of their permitting from Eagle, and one of their conditions is that all state permitting and licensing shall be met by the applicant. If not, there's no building permit to be issued.
My name is Justin Bylick, I'm an architect from Farmington, Michigan, Jeff's County Architects. And I'm presenting to you some of the materials we're planning on using. We don't have the elevations up right now, but our idea with the building is to help present Webster Road as an introduction to your city. I think the city, the Planning Commission was kind of jokingly, this, you know, this is going to be the greatest gas station in the world in Bath Township. It's going to be nice. We've got a very good material in what's called a Luccabond, which is the majority of the material on the sides and the back. It's a high-quality fiber cement type of material. We're also going to be introducing a insulative material in the practice of architecture lately. We are trying to move what's called the dew point of moisture in a building to get it outside the building. So when we have an opportunity to use an insulative material further on the face of the building, it helps us. Rather than just the typical insulation in your wall systems. You continue to move it further out, it makes more of a safe environment for the energy code. It's a very sharp-looking building, we're kind of trying to use a classical look with some of our bracketing and the wood look in the front, and this is the stone, it's a faux stone. This is the insulative material, it's washable, cleanable. Miles asked earlier, what is the warranty on it? It is a 10-year warranty, it's a good material. It sounds like we can use it well, it's going to have a liquid weather barrier with it, so that'll help adhere. There's any questions at all about the look or the types of materials, there's more? There's metals that we're going to be introducing, some paints specifically?
Do you want a closer look?
No, it looks good, it's not, just siding.
No, it's a very, very cool material. It's a Luccabond, it's been, it's called a rainscreen, what it does is it puts a weathering surface on the face of the building, and yet it wicks away all the weather and cold and everything. It's a high-quality material. The bracketing, we're hoping, we actually are now looking in possibly some lighting elements with these brackets. But it's, it's, it's sort of difficult to find specific, specific lighting fixtures that promote that. I found a few things we're looking at.
It looks pretty large just from this view, I take it inside will have C-store stuff?
Absolutely, absolutely, C-store, storage, obviously, there's a small, I don't know if you'd call it a kitchen, but I think it's kitchen area, do we have a plan?
No.
That's the area where that pickup window is going to be. So they're going to have display areas that you come in and you pick up food, there's going to be a large drinks counter. Yeah, and it's not really a drive-through, but it is a, it is a pickup window, there is a distinction. So they're going to be producing product that's going to be sold on the inside, as well as you can come pick it up. Gas station, I'm going to be portions. As we discussed earlier, there could be some, some green area here to the south, it'll help screen a little bit as well. And then your traffic from the freeway is going to be coming up here. We see, we saw a lot of, you can't, Miles supported this too at the planning meeting. When you're coming from 69, you're really not, the position of the road is so low, and it's so wooded. You're not seeing a whole lot there, but when you come up and you're on Webster Road, you do see it. And, and also coming down, and that's our majority is from this view here.
I think there's probably folks in our community who like that hidden gem feel to things.
Yeah, it'll kind of be revealed as you come up and you're coming into Bath Township area. And then of course, you're seeing your VAS coming through, from, from Webster, coming down. It presented with this facade corner right here, which we saw earlier, the large entrance. Classical look, a little classical look with the bracketing.
Miles, do the owners have anything like this in the region that we might be able to take a look at? Or maybe call up to memory that we've driven by before?
We should probably talk about that big point with the planning commission too, what's like some of the amenities, rec fuel, air?
Sure, I can, I'm Jim Chikarli, uh, one of the partners in the project. Um, yes, I have a, I have a uh, location in Potterville off of I-69. That uh, this concept is pretty much be a model, except it'll be a new, new and improved, uh, which has been my dream to do. And uh, so it'll have a full, full-fledged convenience store, the typical things, you know, the food, with a food court. We do a good job with uh, prepared foods, with grinders, pizza, buy the slice, breakfast. We do a scratch pizza for breakfast, lunch that we do slices. Some, something that's uh, easily handable while you're driving down the road, or say you've got a soccer game, or uh, T-ball, that the kids want to come and grab, whatever they want. But then also, when the, Miles and the kid on the fuel side, we will have rec fuel. Something I'm proud of, and we get a lot of comments in our other locations, we have air, free air. We've had that for twenty-seven, twenty-some years, and uh, we go through a lot of compressors with it, but it's, people really appreciate it. And uh, so it'll be a, it'll be a full-fledged with uh, convenience store with, with alcohol as well, so. But just so you know, the, the uh, drive-up window is primarily our food, alcohol's against the law to have a drive, drive-through for, through. So you can't, you can't serve that, it's primarily just for our pickup food. You have young children, you don't want to leave in the car for that type of purpose.
Questions from the board?
Do you have a date on what you would like to get, be able to open one? Are you talking five years down the road?
Oh, no, no, as soon as possible. Um, timeline, um, because of the process, it'll probably be fall before, or spring, I'm sorry, spring before we could start. Um, primarily just because we can't get the asphalt or concrete is the biggest, I mean, the other portion of it we could, but we can't that. So we'd have to probably just wait until spring to break ground.
Anything else from the board?
Well, I'll say, the last.
Thank you, thank you.
Last thing I'll say is, just because I want you guys to understand the due diligence that the planning commission and our partnering agencies put in here. Um, obviously, there's underground tanks for gas stations, those are always a point of concern, environmental impacts of these. A series of conditions were put in, and uh, special attention was paid from the township engineer on the design of those. And at the planning commission, probably spent an hour plus, just talking about the tanks. The developing team brought in some experts to install these and maintain them and operate them, to talk about the redundancies within these modern systems. They're not just a single wall of aluminum tanks of the nineteen-seventies, so.
That will help us avoid the problems we're having in front of my ear?
It would.
Okay.
Especially if nobody sets it on fire.
Nobody.
Alright.
Alright. We'll move on then, thank you gentlemen for joining us. Fourteen, Large A, Small C, Little Bloomers Learning Special Use Permit.
Hang on here. They actually sent me a more cleaned-up plan today, so let me pull that one up, this one wasn't in your packet.
Thanks for coming, gentlemen.
It's what?
Alright. This is a little bit more of a cleaned-up sheet, this one kind of came at me fast. The planning commission didn't see a major issue with this.
Can you share the location?
Yeah.
People are having a hard time.
Yeah, for sure.
Anywhere it's at.
Is that M78 and Peacock Road?
Yeah.
They've really been working on that bridge on the highway there, it's Peacock Road, so just south of that.
So there's Peacock, there's old M78. There's a currently established building there right now, it was a financial firm, or some kind of financial offices there before. Um, the current um, applicant here tonight has a purchase agreement with them, contingent upon gaining zoning approval. Uh, typically is it six, did you guys arrange sixty days or ninety days? Ninety days, so you, this is standard practice in this industry of commercial buildings. Um, a lot of times, it's just one office changing hands with another office, so in terms of land use policy, they don't need anything from us. It's continuing the same land use, because they're seeking to establish a daycare. A daycare is usually in planning considered a more sensitive land use. Most municipalities uh, have it as a use allowed by a special use permit, which we do as well in that. And with no land use of this type existing there prior, the necessity to gain a special use permit comes into play, which also trips the necessity for a set of plans to be submitted. So I worked with the applicant, and we got them the set of plans we had on file, just to kind of lower the barrier to entry for them. But there, you know, as time has evolved, there's other things that we are looking for on plans that wouldn't have been on that older set. So they've been working with us to do their due diligence. Like I said, it came to the planning commission though for introduction, and uh, within their scope as the uh, planning commission, they decided, they didn't see a lot of issues with this. We put some generic conditions on it for this packet, just making sure they gain all state license, state, local, and county licenses to operate this facility, and putting that responsibility on the developer and applicant. But other than that, um, like, they didn't see an issue, and they wanted to get it before the board to accelerate this process. In terms of what I generally think of daycare as a land use, I think it's a highly needed land use in this area. I think daycare rates are insanely expensive. Um, I'm happy to create competition in our local area with as many daycares as possible, in my opinion. I think we're in a childcare crisis, similar to how we're in a housing crisis, and supply could alleviate that. In terms of going on a micro scale of what I think, and let me get the plan back up here, we've got a lot of tabs going on now. Here, let me get myself straight here. Alright, here we go. On a micro scale, what I think about this as a daycare site is, I'm not seeing too much concern with it. Right now, they have two different parking lots, some of the, you know, possible externalities that were brought up by the planning commission were, how is bus pickup and drop-off going to work? It turns out, one of the applicants actually drives a school bus and was able to speak to that pretty well, so that was appreciated. They, you know, had the two different options, so that plays well for access into the facility. Uh, I think right now, you're looking to have seventy-five percent of the building be daycare square footage, and another twenty-five percent for some other use. Create diversity of revenue streams. The playground facility itself will be in the back, and they have shown here kind of where that fencing outline would be. Um, I think it's probably the best way, place and area for it, that creates some layers of separation between the play area and the road, which is probably key. When I was trying to think about this rush to the, from the planning commission to get this before the board, and recommendations that we could possibly think of for this, each thing that I was thinking like, oh, what about this, what about that? Is really, in my mind, covered by the licensing process that the state enacts to get one of these in place. There is many barriers to entry to establish one of these, I don't know if you guys have even talked to some of our uh, you know, fellow township people that have tried to just establish a six-person daycare out of their house, and the trials and tribulations that the state has put them through, just to locate one of these out of their homes. It's not an easy process, so. Again, I, I didn't really build out the set of recommended conditions on this, um, just because I felt like any barriers to entry that we are creating will be duplicated by the state licensing process.
How many kids?
Well, the applicant's here, I'm, they can speak better to that.
Excuse me.
Hi, I'm Pam Bottles, and this is my daughter Mary. Um, my husband and I are looking to purchase this property and then leasing it to Mary to run um, her preschool out of. It will have, at any given time, it'll be forty-five young learners in the facility.
Can you talk, it's probably important to know the age demographic that you're looking at?
Sure.
It's preschool age, so it'd be two and a half, all the way until they go to kindergarten, so comparing that for.
I know myself and the planning commission were impressed by the applicant's due diligence up to this point, so I don't know if you want to hear about some of the planning that you guys have put into to get to this point?
Sure, I mean, it's, because the purchase of this pop, property is solely for the purpose of, of opening this preschool, we want to make sure from a due diligence standpoint that we have all of our bases covered, and we're not going into the purchase of, purchase of a property that we cannot eventually use for this purpose. So we have um, contracted with a local fire marshal to do the first run-through. Um, he, he would not do the inspection of this property for state licensing in this township, but has done it in other townships. So he did a walk-through of the property, what kind of renovations we would need to make in order to make it safe for, for young students. Their, the fire codes are much more stringent for children, so they would be to office use. We've also started the, our licensing process, and in fact, just today, had the environmental inspection. And then we, you know, with, we're trying to plan this all out in a way that if we do run into a major road block, we can back out without, without having too much money invested. Um, but if we do get a special use permit, then we will start the site plans, which would be the formal approval of the fire safety portion of the building.
How many employees do you envision?
At most, eight.
That would be six on-site at, at any given time, yeah. It would operate Monday through Friday, eight-thirty to three-thirty, with after-care from three-thirty till five-thirty. Uh, for those students who need a little bit of extra care until their parents can pick them up. It would run on a school schedule during regular school year, but then there would be a summer enrichment program that would also run Monday through Friday throughout the summer months.
Other questions?
Is this in a home that's already there, that's, or the building is? It's a business. What is the business that's there now?
It was a financial office.
A what?
Financial office.
Okay, okay.
I think they had something like probably, that you might know better than me, but it was a twenty employees in there, fifteen employees?
I don't know, yeah, I'd say fifteen.
Okay.
Alright, if there's nothing else from the board, we'll keep truckin'. Thank you. We're now at fourteen A, Small D, Meadowbrook West Residential Condominium Special Use Permit.
Alright. Let me clean up my tab situation here. Alright. Alright, and we'll get you guys located again. Alright, so the parcel we're talking about is right here. This is obviously Business sixty-nine, also known as Sagino Highway, Marshall Road's right here, there's a McDonald's, MSU Credit Union. So, now let's go to the plan. So Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, we're talking about forty-eight units off the top of my head, okay? Uh, forty-eight dwelling units here is what's being proposed. This is another planned unit development, similar to the nine-unit planned unit development that we talked about earlier tonight. This Meadowbrook neighborhood has kind of been in development for a while now. There's Meadowbrook, and then recently Meadowbrook West, and more recent, it's going to be Meadowbrook West Phase Two, I don't know what you were calling it. Right now, the Meadowbrook West that some of you might be familiar with is this southern portion here. You can tell when you drive in, kind of what's the newer portion of Meadowbrook and what's older, because this has a more modern architectural style, I would say. Even has some single sloped roofs. So, I mean, I think very cool homes, in my opinion, but I kind of like the modern style. The price point for these homes, I think, is, and not that this is important or not important, but it's just good to have a sense of what homes I think are going for in the township, and where things kind of stand in the housing economy. I think you guys are, were selling some of these for four, five hundred thousand, and now you're even seeing into the six hundred thousand price point. Yeah, and your, your labor and input costs have gone up, as I think anybody that went to the lumber section at Home Depot in the last couple of years is probably shocked. Not a good time to be a work worker. So, yeah, in terms of land use, I mean, this is a part of what I view as a township's effort to grow sustain, sustainably. It's important to, if we're going to have sprawl in the township, which I feel like sprawl is just a natural house growth of a metro urban area. Obviously, to our south, we have Lansing and East Lansing, which are big uh, push factors on the municipalities around them, they push out to us. They pull people into them and then push to us. We see a lot of the medical professor, MSU staff of, you know, the various hospitals living in these homes. This area is within our service area, so this scale of density creates efficiencies within our municipal infrastructure, efficiencies within our road network investments, efficiencies within our sewer network. And what I mean by that is, if you're having sprawl, and you're having one house on five-acre lots, you know, just down the road, the dollar amount per user that you're going to spend on your sewer system, first, let's say, for example, is going to be much higher than if you have twenty homes in the same, you know, couple-acre area. You get more bang for your buck on the municipal side. So, in the planning world, that is something that we consider in our calculus when we're thinking about land use policy, especially when we go into crafting comprehensive plans and the vision of the township. Now, the flip side of that is, we wouldn't want to introduce something like this up in the rural area, next to a bunch of farms. That wouldn't be good land use policy, it wouldn't be cohesive with the area. So that's what I mean by sustainable growth, sustainable development. Uh, we want good neighboring land uses that play well with each other. So I, I didn't see a big conflict here, especially because this plan has been in the works and in the vision for a long time now. I'm excited, I guess, about seeing developers eager to invest in the township and locate these units in Bath Township. I know I've spoken to some of my fellow planners that are like, can you get us forty-eight units of housing in our municipality? So, um, the lots are a little bit smaller, so that was one thing that we talked about at the planning commission, and therefore, we talked about drainage. Uh, there's kind of a whole engineered drainage network. There's kind of a whole engineered drainage network within the Meadowbrook West and Meadowbrook, eventually all draining to Lake Lansing and the end of it, right? And so, there's kind of some inter-county drainage reviews that go into that. As with the gas service station, just the scale and density that we're looking at here, there were a lot of eyeballs on this review, a lot of long agency reviews, and a lot of long discussions at the planning commission as well. I know early on when we were talking about this plan, this plan was actually amended. And I don't know, the developer, you guys want to go into that level of detail, but there were factors that were considered and then changes that were made. So, that's kind of proof of the review process playing out and the planning commission and the developer not just like going with the first round of plans. So, there's edits and changes that have been made to create, again, a better product for the township.
The traffic pattern over there is so hard for a lot of the system we got right now. How much, this is gonna put quite a bit, they put in a red light there by Monticello's?
That was talked about, so people brought that up. We got the opinion from the road commission. They said that they have seen increased volumes there. I know on the Meridian side, I've seen increased volumes. The road commission at this time didn't think it was to that bar yet, but something they're concerned.
Is there only one exit?
There's two, so you can get out on Perry as well.
On Perry Road?
Yeah. I don't know if you guys have any questions from the developer. Chris is here from HDI.
No, I just know we have, every road committee meeting, we have traffic problems that people are excited about over there.
Yeah.
John knows.
It's hard to make a left out of there, for sure.
Yeah, especially at certain times of the day.
Yeah, rush hour. And that's bedroom community problems, generally speaking. I mean, when I lived at Somerset, it's hard to make a left out of Somerset at rush hour. There, it's a little bit more challenging, four lanes of traffic.
Other questions from the board? These two will come back to us?
Yep.
Great. If there's no other questions, we'll move on to item E, which is the last of this new business section for items for introduction and discussion, and drive small private road.
Okay. All right, let me locate you guys that one now. All right. This can be a little confusing, and I'm not entirely sure how this happened. It's just one of those Bath Township, Plank County things. So, Ann Drive, right, so when I think about Ann Drive, I think about it really in three sections of road. So, there's a public portion of Ann Drive, which I think we're all familiar with. Then, when you, when Ann Drive kind of hits that dirt road portion of it, that's when you're getting onto the private sections of Ann Drive. If there's a fork in the road here, and both the north and south fork, and we'll call this the east and west fork, are both called Ann Drive. All right, so what we're talking about here is the north-south portion of Ann Drive, and particularly the southern half of that north-south portion of Ann Drive. A while back, the township made private roads no longer a thing. Before that, they were permitted with minimal restrictions, then they were not permitted, no matter what. And so, the thinking of the planning commission, myself, given the housing crisis and a lot of other inputs that we're looking at, is I was like, could we permit these, like, with conditions? Like, not permit them all the way, not, not permit them all the way, but build in a series of conditions that would cure some of the externalities and negative ones that are being created by private roads. Because, you know, you guys have had some issues with private roads as a board. I know I've had some phone calls about private roads, and my neighbor and me can't get along, and will the township please do something about it? And of course, we won't because it's a private road, and it's your responsibility. And, you know, so all the things that happen with that. Anyways, that's kind of the background of how we got here tonight. The ordinance was changed, standards and conditions and all kinds of things were put in place. And then, we had an applicant submit one of these, and it is required that they get a private road permit from this body. It's a new permit that we've created here. There are three types of permits within this category of ordinances that we've created here in the township. There is a driveway permit, so that's allowing not just one driveway off of your property as is permitted by the road commission, but allowing two homes to be served off the same driveway. That's a driveway permit. And there's a small private road, which we're talking about today. So, that is a private road serving anywhere from three to six homes, dwelling units. And then, there is a large private road serving seven to twelve dwelling units. Anything above twelve, so thirteen dwelling units or higher, that's a public road. There is no, you can't build a private road in Bath Township serving that many homes. And there, those were somewhat arbitrarily chosen, but they were chosen because we feel like it's easier to bring a lower number of dwelling units to consensus than a higher number of dwelling. It's much easier to sit around the table with six people and come to consensus than it is to sit around a table with fifty people and come to consensus. So, that was the thought pattern there. Another requirement of the ordinance is that a maintenance agreement be established with whatever properties are buying into this new section of private road, be it small or large. We did not require a maintenance agreement for the driveway because our hope and humanity is that two homes can figure it out themselves. So, a maintenance agreement was submitted with the plan before us tonight, before the board tonight. And just to go over the plan here, this parcel that is currently one parcel would be, would be sought to be divided in this manner, creating another access in what's currently permitted on that section of private drive. And then, there's a second exhibit here, I'll cause that out. And then, there's a larger exhibit here of some other parcels that are called out. But just to simplify this, I'm just gonna do some quick sketching about what we're actually talking about here. Mr. Kessler, correct me if I draw anything wrong here. Essentially, this parcel would be looking to be divided like this. And then, like this, maintaining its current access off this road. That wouldn't be change all but building a new first and second access here. This parcel would be combined with this parcel, and then divided like this. So, right now, this parcel technically has two access points, and it would remain two access points. So, we're not adding an addition of access points there to that parcel. And then, this parcel would be divided like this, an access point here. So, we're talking about one, two, three, four, five homes. In terms of land use policy, I think if you can get beyond the externalities that could potentially be created by the private road externality there, I don't see an issue with five one homes on this road. They're large lots, they'll have to have septic systems. I think they might be able to get.
Three of them will get water.
Oh, yeah, so there was some water in this area, two wells. Yeah, but all septic?
All septic.
And then, the only concern that came out of this for the planning commission is that proof of access be provided, which we talked about a number of ways that proof could be provided, even though opinion from the legal opinion saying that access is granted. So, I won't go into too much of the discussion on that. But that was kind of the overarching condition for this one. Again, in terms of land use policy, I don't have a huge concern about five homes on this private section of drive. We do have a maintenance agreement that was submitted, I believe it's included in the packet. If it's not, I can include it next time, or I can email it out, though, so you guys have some time to review before next time. How we structured our ordinance was we actually worked with our legal counsel to develop a kind of boilerplate maintenance agreement, and then we give that out to the developer. Obviously, every situation's different, and that's kind of like, hey, here's our suggestion for what agreement could look like. It sounds like Mr. Kessler worked with a team in DeWitt that has done this, and you went with the agreement that they use as their standard agreement in DeWitt.
And then, the larger piece of land on the right there, that's where the bigger development is planned for?
Yeah, and that's just been introduced at the planning commission right now. I believe Mr. Kessler is still working with CEBs and SCUMA to work through some of the sewer elements. But that's not, yeah, there's some talks there. It's been introduced at the planning commission, but we haven't even gone through the point of full agency review yet, so we're.
But the long-term intent would be that that also dumps onto you?
No, it would be all for Gary, which is public. So, a little bit of a distinction there. No, this would be, that would be something where I would be concerned about that many units dumping into a private drive, nor would that, the through traffic of that alone, would it be our ordinance? Now, there has been talk about creating a emergency access only across the back portion of that, just so on the rare occasion of us needing to get a fire vehicle in the back faster, some kind of emergency arises, flooding, what have you, you know, at least there's some kind of access. But again, we haven't, we're not even in the agency review phase for that.
Yeah, but it's nice to think ahead about the whole area as a whole. Questions, thoughts, concerns?
I don't see the private drive agreement, maintenance agreement.
Yeah.
So, if you could send that out, that would be helpful.
My apologies.
That's okay.
We were putting a big pack together last week.
These two will come back to us next meeting?
Yes.
All right.
It's been fun.
Thank you, sir. Our last item to discuss tonight is fourteen Large B Items for Action, Small A Adoption of the L-4029. And we have the assessor here to talk us through that.
So, you have before you the L-4029, which we did the calculations off. But first off, congratulations to all of you for bringing forth that police and fire millage. And thank you to all the residents out there that approved that for, it will definitely help with our budgeting and for our police and fire protection. So, all you're gonna see is you're gonna see that millage. We have like heavily, heavily rollback, millage reduction fraction is what we're gonna take from last year's millage, we'll multiply it by that millage reduction fraction, and then that's gonna get your maximum amount that you can levy for the year. And that will be the proposed amount that is to be levied for operating is three-point-five-five-one. And then, our new police and fire millage that was just approved at four mills, that would not receive that millage reduction fraction because it's a new millage and it wasn't here before May first. And then, we also adopt the police and fire, or the public library millage. That one was not a new millage, it was here prior to that May first date, so they will receive that millage reduction fraction, and theirs is that point-six-seven-three-four. And on this sheet here, if you guys all wish, then you can propose that levied millage at that three-point-five-five-one, four mills, and then point-six-seven-three-four. If you want, you could go for less than that if you wanted to, and then we would just do some recalculations, but that's what's proposed in front of you right now.
I have a question.
Sure.
Doesn't the police and fire millage technically expire in twenty-nine? Because it would cover all of twenty-twenty-eight?
I think it goes through, I think if we read the, what was on the ballot, it says twenty-twenty-eight. So, you're gonna collect it through twenty-twenty-eight, so then it would go up in twenty-twenty-nine. You would not be able to collect it. But what it actually said in the language was twenty-twenty-eight.
That the millage would go through twenty-eight?
Yes.
But this is saying the expiration date, which would be twenty-twenty-nine?
Well, no, this would be twenty-twenty-eight, so you'll levy your millage on December first. You'll be collecting it in twenty-twenty-nine, but it's a twenty-twenty-eight millage. And so, I don't, I don't think I have a.
Why is the library one calculated differently, then?
Because they asked for it to be longer. I think they went for ten years the last time they went in to the voters.
Right, but then by that same thought pattern, it should say twenty-thirty, not twenty-thirty-one?
No, it's how it was written, they go through twenty-thirty-one.
But that would be eleven years.
Ten years, and then you get.
They did twenty-twenty-one.
Do you see what I mean? Like, the thought process would be the same for both of them?
I could double-check that expiration date. I know it went off of what the millage said, and then to the twenty-thirty-one we had before, but I think it also goes by when they requested the millage and when they started collecting the millage. So, I think that's part of it as well, because they.
So, the library would have.
The library went.
Started in twenty-two?
They start, in twenty-two, they had their vote, but they actually had a millage reduction fraction before they even started collecting it. So, I think the vote was.
This says the vote was in twenty-one.
Yes, but I don't think they started collecting until twenty-two.
Until twenty-two.
And we'd have to go back and see how it was worded, but I, that's how we did that before.
Okay. Got it, thank you. I think something that the, this board in all its forms over the last several years has not realizes the massive rollback in the charter operating millage that we have seen in our discussions last year about revenue. What we heard from other communities is that they were consistently resetting it back to some level, whether it's that level or some lower level, whereas it appears that we have not ever done that. And so, we're down, you know, one-point-five mills just in rollback. So, that may be something that we need to address in the future as we figure out what our budget's gonna look like. Other questions, thoughts for Beth? And you want action on this tonight, right?
If you want action on it, we can go to the county.
Great. Someone interested in putting a motion forward?
I'll make a motion to adopt the L-4029 for twenty-twenty-four tax rate.
All right, we've got a motion, is there a second?
I'll support it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion about the L-4029? All right, hearing done, let's do a roll call vote.
Wilson?
Yes.
Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Rose Kranz?
Yes.
Taggerman?
Yes.
Killerman?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Beth. That brings us to the end of our business tonight. Last up on the agenda is to hear from our superintendent.
Thank you very much. Starting tonight, I would like to remind you all that our next meeting is on Tuesday, September third, as a result of the Labor Day holiday, so it will be a Tuesday meeting. Many of the items that were before you tonight for introduction will be action items at that meeting. So, most likely content that you've seen before, but again, we'll pad the agenda a little bit with action items. You will also be at that time, the township budget will be issued on September first, which is a Sunday. Unfortunately, that's when law requires it. I don't know that it'll be available in time enough for us to consider that at the meeting on Monday, or Tuesday, excuse me, Tuesday night, unless that's something that you would like to do, but we can have that discussion as we approach that date. Township department heads are currently putting together their budget requests for that, and then I will put together my recommendation that will come out on the first for the Board of Trustees to consider. The township employees are also working on implementing several of the approved projects that they had for twenty-twenty-four, which includes revamp of our website and a keyless entry camera system that is being implemented. So, staff will be in contact with you for the items that you will need as we proceed through that project, such as key cards. through that project, such as key cards and other items that you may need to enter the buildings here at the township. I would like to share that there was an outbreak of COVID at the senior center. As of last Friday, we had four individuals that were confirmed COVID positive. We will continue to watch that as we enter into the fall and winter. Unfortunately, seniors are one of the most vulnerable populations for that, but also we want to make sure that they're safe, and with that, we keep our staff, or, excuse me, our staff, safe as well. So as we maneuver the rocky waters, COVID is still among the issues that we have to pay attention to, so we will be sure to keep you posted as we move through that season. If there are any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them for you at this time.
The senior center is open as normal, though?
It is at this time. We are going to be consulting with the Mid-Michigan District Health Department again. The protocols have changed somewhat. Back when we were in the thick of COVID, four was an outbreak. It's no longer considered that, so we're just going to reconfirm what the tipping point is and when we would need to close the center based on their recommendations, and make sure that we give it enough time to pass through the population that attends. We have a feeling that the number was greater than the four confirmed, because we had many people that were absent but had not contacted us to let us know that they had been there on a previous open day and that had tested positive for COVID. So without those indicators, it's difficult for us to know whether we have a smaller issue on our hands, or if we need to take corrective action to help maintain the health of our seniors.
So you're going to be open Monday?
Yes, we were open today.
That's right.
So attendance was down today, and I do have a feeling that we may have more confirmed cases than we're aware of, but they seem to be staying home. Our first line of defense is always, if you don't feel good, you should stay home. So hopefully, that is what is occurring, and if they need to let us know that they've tested positive, hopefully, they will do that, because, you know, they sit at tables that are somewhat close together and can spread that amongst themselves when they're congregating and sharing lunch together.
Isn't the state supposed to contact when they have somebody that has COVID, contact the people that they were in contact with?
So that is not necessarily the case anymore. If people don't go out and test in a testing facility, which is not usually the norm anymore, if they're testing at home and using a home test, they're not reporting that out to anybody. We were fortunate to know of the four people that tested positive last week, because they let us know that they tested positive, but not everyone does that. We can encourage that, but we can't make them adhere to that.
Okay.
I think if they get a script for PAXLOVID, they have to go to the doc's office, and they may report. At least this one's not as deadly.
Other questions for the superintendent? I keep getting news postings that the beaches closed. Is that a thing?
So there appears to be some pet ducks that are...
I don't know where you are, but you can show me.
Thanks, Miles. Yeah, he doesn't know where his pet ducks are. So there is a residence on the lake that has, what I am understanding, is a pair of white ducks, and they seem to be...
Pooping.
Pooping. And so the readings that we are getting from the testing of the Mid-Michigan District Health Department have been high enough that they are recommending people stay out of the water there because of E. coli. As many people know, several years ago, we had a summer where, it was a very hot summer, and we had to close our beach for most of, I think, July and August because of the E. coli levels. You may read on Facebook where people will say, well, people are dumping their sewer, their waste into the lake. That is no longer the case, and I'm not sure if it was the case, I didn't grow up around here, but I'm told that it was the case. But all of the residences around Park Lake are currently a part of the sanitary sewer system that moves our waste to DeWitt. But the geese have been a huge problem, the ducks have been a huge problem, and apparently, these pet ducks have been contributing to that E. coli reading that is much too high for people to safely swim in the water. So we will keep people posted. The Health Department did post signs down there, letting people know that that was the case. We are very fortunate that we were part of a grant program to do testing of our water in the lake and to let us know. The Health Department's been a fantastic partner in that, has been helpful to us to let our people know when it's not safe to swim in the water. You'll recall that we hired a contractor called Goosebusters several years ago, and they deter the geese from staying in the area with dogs and then nest destruction. So that is something that we've done over, I think, the past two to three years. We will continue those efforts, but apparently, these ducks are just outside of what, of our knowledge, and are causing a problem kind of on their own, which who would have thought two little ducks could close down a beach? But, yeah, so...
Do they do, like, DNA testing of their samples to know that it's ducks versus geese?
The water test, they test the water.
Yeah, so, so part of the problem is that some of it is testing, and then some of it is by sight, what they're seeing when they're there. So if they can tell, okay, there's thirty geese on the beach at the time we went to test, but apparently, these ducks have become a source of contamination.
They like to go to the beach?
Mm-hmm, they like to swim in the beach, just along the beach.
They're always in the water, on the shore.
So it is closed right now, we don't know when it'll be open?
They test weekly, so if the average mean, I'm going to use words I am unfamiliar with in terms of this testing, it is possible if the level was a high contamination rate, it's probably not possible that it would open the next week, but it would take a couple of weeks for the sample size, for the contamination to go down. So it's very possible that in the next week or two, that it'll be back open again.
Have we communicated this out?
Unfortunately, I don't know that we have. The signs showed up at the beach, we were not, and because I was gone, I'm sorry, I was not directly notified. I will see if our other staff has been notified, but in my absence, it's possible that we missed a notification, that we will try to correct that and communicate.
I haven't noticed anything on social media or anything, but I just keep getting these hits on the email that's like, "Beth Township in the news," and I'm like, "What's up with Beth Township?" And I'm like, "Oh, this isn't good news."
I can't let my dogs run over on his land and poop. Why is it not illegal to have your ducks running around? If they're pets, they're pets, if they're wild, they can poop.
I was not aware that they were pets until today. I thought they were wild. Somebody has informed me otherwise, so it is something that we will further look into and make some contact with somebody, but, yeah.
A pet's a pet.
I was not aware that they were pets. I have a friend that lives on Park Lake, and I've seen them, and I thought, oh, aren't they cute? Well, they're causing issues.
They can be out during duck season.
So...
I think one was a pet, and then that pet's mate died, and now they have...
They got another one.
Got together.
Got a friend, okay.
From what I understand.
Is there duck season? I think they can lose their ducks. It's just...
I do love duck tails, but, all right. Any other questions, serious or otherwise, for the superintendent? Welcome back!
It's good to be back.
We're glad to have you back. All right, if there's nothing else for the board or from the superintendent, we'll move to public statement number two. Our public seems to have atrophied. All right, doesn't look like we have anybody who wants to talk to us. We'll go to board member comments, and we'll start with Kate.
All right. I would like to thank everyone who voted for Police and Fire Millage. I'm thankful that that's going to help the township with the things that we're trying to do. On behalf of the Vassal Museum Committee, I want to thank you for supporting the archaeological study that was just completed, and we got the report from that last week, and hopefully, somebody has gotten the invoice for that. I believe it was forwarded to a bunch of people.
It was.
And I believe that's it.
Did they find anything?
No, not, well, nothing that would be atypical for having a school there for many years. Nothing that they thought should hinder the process of going through that project. At least in my interpretation of reading it, I would say that.
I have nothing.
I also want to thank the community for voting for the Police and Fire Millage, it was, or the Public Safety Millage now. I think it was helpful to see that despite the rumors and myths on Facebook that average people looked at this and saw what it was, which was a way to support our township and our public safety, so thank you for that, and excited to see what happens in the coming election as well. And I just want to remind folks that we've got some committee vacancies, we've got vacancies on the Housing Commission, the Park Lake Advisory Board, Public Art Committee, Rec Advisory Committee, Senior Services Advisory Board, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. We desperately need folks who want to give back to their community, and we would love to see applications for residents who might help us in those ways, and that application can be found on the township website. That's it for me.
Are they short of applications?
Yes, they are short of applications.
I guess nothing. It was a good meeting. Thanks, Miles, for all your help and understanding everything on tonight's agenda.
Jack?
Ditto, Miles. Cornet, nothing.
Ditto. I got to go on a nice little boat trip around Park Lake last week with, Dwight Washington was there, and it was really interesting, and I sent a letter to you guys about questions the residents had about these bloody weeds and stuff, that they have lakefront property, they can't see it or get to it. And their feeling is the, like, weed control guy couldn't get to their property because he didn't have the right boat to get through the right weeds, and it's a question that they brought to me, and I said, "I don't know anything about any of it, but I'm bringing it to the board," and sent letters, and see if I can find out something for the residents there, because it's, I mean, the weeds are this high, they're like small trees, you'd have to go in there with a chainsaw. It's not like the in-the-water weeds, it's, so there's a problem with Park Lake that it's eventually in our lap, and I'm going to try to find out the contract and talk to the PhD guy from MSU that really knows the weeds and what has to be done. And there's all these laws and rules about chemicals you can use, and, you know, like I mentioned, aerators, and they said, "That can't be illegal," so there's things that we can do and help them understand. If this guy has a contract, and he's the only guy that can go in there, and he doesn't have the right kind of boat to fix my property that's supposed to be lakefront, what we can do about it in the long run? But it was really interesting, and it was the neighbor that took us all out.
So in the past, not to interrupt you, in the past, Dan Hayes actually went on that tour when I've gone on it in the past, along with the gentleman that does the spraying of the lake, and his name is Steve Hansen of PLM Lake, I think it's PLM Lake Strategies.
You're right.
And some of those things, those aerators and dredging and all those things kind of were talked about by Dan Hayes, and what are the benefits, the kind of the pros and the cons of doing those things. It is my understanding that unfortunately, with this not being Lake Lansing, the lake is doing exactly what it's meant to do, which is, which is fill in. And unfortunately, for the lake owners, we contract as the township for the public areas of the lake, so the boat launch, the beach are sprayed, only those areas. And then that company approaches the homeowners around the lake and offers his services to them at the same time that he comes to spray for the township.
What the homeowners told me, that, and I really don't know, to get the second hand, that he didn't have a, you almost need an airboat to get into some of these areas, they're so overgrown now with these invasive species, that some of the homeowners were upset, saying they couldn't hire somebody who could get in there because the Steve Hansen is under contract. So they asked me to find out what is our, what's legal, what's not legal.
He's under contract with the township, but unless he's under contract with the friends at Park Lake, I don't, I don't know why they would be prevented from hiring someone else. We only contract with him for the public areas of the lake.
Okay, well, that's information they didn't seem to know, because it was, you could see the public area.
We don't contract for private homeowners on the lake. We contract just for the public areas of the lake.
People thought, understood that it was, that he had a contract for the whole lake, so if that's not, they need to understand it. That's where, I had no clue.
They could contract with anybody that...
They want to do anything they want. Somehow, there's an understanding that that's not so, so we can clear it up somehow.
I mean, I can share the contract that the township has with them, that's public information.
Because it's really, when we took the boat around, you couldn't get in two, I'd say, three quarters of the lake.
There are areas of the lake that I was, I was flabbergasted that Dan Hayes can actually stand on, which...
Oh, yeah, the birds were standing on it.
Yeah, which is...
So, and they, to say, "I can't poison in front of my house," or clear...
I think what's probably occurred, and I, and I don't have a full grasp of the situation, we spray every year, multiple times a year, and if the homeowners are not somewhat doing the same thing, then their area of the lake is going to fill in.
The one that I heard that I, I don't understand, it was all new to me, but that they, the weeds were, you couldn't see the lake from their home. They had lakefront property, and these weeds are like six feet tall and this big around, they're not weeds, they're like little trees or something, but they, this fellow, they wanted to hire somebody else to come in, and their understanding was they couldn't because Steve is under contract for the whole lake.
That is, so I don't, I don't think that's accurate.
We just need to clear it up, yeah. I don't, I don't know at all.
I may be incorrect, but I don't think that's accurate, and I don't think we could contract on behalf of the homeowners.
Just, I'm not specifically familiar with this instance, but I would say from a general knowledge, having worked with lake improvement boards and private lakes in other parts of the state, a Lake Improvement Board Association could contract for, you know, the entirety of the lake and the treatment thereof, and then private property owners would be discouraged from doing anything further, because there could be conflict. So it may be something that, let's clarify what the township has actually taken on, and then sometimes the other thing that I've seen, again, from wearing my other hat and working with lake improvement boards, is that there are a lot of different companies that provide these services. They don't always play well nicely together.
That's what...
And so if there's good communication and those private property owners, if they have questions, they can certainly facilitate up to the township through you.
Right, that's what they were doing. It's property lake management contract is what they call it, for Park Lake, and the owner, the property owners, and it was like five or six of them said that they, this property lake management company had a contract for the whole lake, so there's a misunderstanding, it sounds like, totally. And they, they couldn't, they felt, maybe this guy told them that, that you can't hire George to come in and clean out your, and they can't even get to the water. They can't get their boats out. It's crazy. I was astounded, like you said, birds are standing in the water. Well, it's going to happen probably anyway, but if I wanted to clean up Stripe from my house to the open water, they believe they can't, so that's all I'm bringing back to you.
It may be more of an Eagle issue, too, because anything, anytime we do any shore restoration or anything with the lake, we have to get permission from Eagle, the Department Eagle, it used to be Environmental Quality, now it's Eagle.
All right, well, I'm bringing it to you guys, because it was a definite, I mean, you own lakefront property, and you can't see the lake, that's a, you're paying the extra taxes for all of the lakefront property to have a lake, and you can't have it. So it's an issue for us, I think.
They can, I just think they need better communication, that's all.
Yeah.
I don't know that they're being charged extra taxes, though.
Your assessor's sitting right behind me. They have the same millage as you do.
There's nothing extra. Then that's what I was told, so that's, I'm just trying to bring... Well, I had no idea, that's why I'm bringing it to you guys.
It's the same millage.
Their home value might...
Yes. Yeah, okay.
Right, reflects that, but the taxes are the same.
Okay, percentage, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, it's, Karen and I talked about this, I feel like ad nauseam, like, how do we get the right messages out to people to counteract the wrong messages without spending a bunch of money? But it's clear, it persists.
Right, well, that's why, if I can clear it up for the people there, I will try my best.
Thanks for that. Anything else?
Nope, done.
All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will re-adjourn.
A motion, is there a second?
Sure, second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, we'll see you next meeting, and don't forget, it's Tuesday. If you all show up and nobody's here, happy Labor Day.